Good evening everybody again. As we mentioned earlier, if there is a fire alarm, it's not a drill. And get out from our rear entrance. First item, to receive apologies for absence. Same councillor Tolber, due to his dispensation. Twenty-one twenty-eight-two, to note declarations of interests. Does anyone have a declaration of interest or dispensation requirement?
None, Chair.
Thank you. Open forum. We all know the drill with the open forum. For those who are not familiar, restricted to fifteen minutes unless the chairman allows otherwise. And what I'd like is rather than long statements taking place in the forum, it's for a question. And that we would address that question, you can by only mention it in the forum, but we would take the question during the actual agenda item. It seems to make a lot more sense. So, open forum, does any members of the public, Alan? Copies will be available, but once it's been agreed, yes. Mrs Walsh?
Um, thank you, um, thank you, Yannick. When did you say you came back? Were you giving the information of insurance of our responsibility and that?
Yes, but we, we wouldn't have that insurance detail now, but we do have parish council insurance that covers all our equipment. Is that what you're talking about, at the?
Yeah, we are, I'm aware of that, I'm just wondering because you wanted to be able to play, while we're in parish council office, would you be insured in still?
Yes, yes, they would, yeah.
But I would suggest also that even if there was a doubt on that, we have our own household insurance. Everyone has their own household insurance. But I'll, I'll make a comment on that as we get there. Any more questions? Mrs Walsh?
Um, when was the, when was the age of ten? The formal response from Handforth and Camhameau, will you be giving the information as well as the age of twelve?
Um, yeah, facts. Based on actual numbers produced for that purpose. It's not gut feel or anything like that, it's facts. Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss it when we get there, yes. Okay. No more questions, Mrs Walsh? No? No, okay, thank you. Yes, Ian?
Yeah, um, in relation to item eleven, the agenda item eleven, about the default notice from Handforth in respect of eight thousand plus pounds, it's obviously a very serious issue for the Handforth community. And will for equally obvious reasons have been investigated in the public, included by the barrister engaged by Cheshire East manager officer?
No, that one with the case. It was out with the investigation.
So the five hundred page report didn't even cover issues of this nature?
No. It was not part of the original investigation. But, but it had, it came to light a number of months after that it started. But I will be making a, a statement shortly. I'll take it, no more questions? Thank you, that's the end of the public forum. Item twenty-one twenty-eight-four, to approve and sign the minutes at the Handforth Town Council meeting of fourteenth of September. Do any councillors have any issues regarding those minutes? No? Thank you. Can I have a proposal to accept? Thank you, Karen. And Julie Smith to second. And we have a vote, please. Unanimous, thank you. And twenty-one twenty-eight-five, to receive a report from the PSO if he's here.
He said he was going to send me a written one, President.
Okay. Um, do we need to defer that? I'll just have it on for the next, have it on for the next item. Yeah, okay. It may even turn up. Yes. Item twenty-one twenty-eight-six, to approve and sign the order of payments for October twenty-twenty-one. Does anyone have any issues on these? No? Thank you, can I have a proposal, please?
I'll propose.
And a second, eh? Thank you. And a vote. Unanimous, thank you. Order of payments approved. Twenty-one twenty-eight-seven, to receive recommendation from the Finance Committee and to agree the twenty-two twenty-three financial year budget. As we've, uh, requested a couple of amendments to that budget, can we defer this? No?
I don't want the amendments, sir.
Oh, right. So, yeah, okay. So we'll put it in, including the amendments that, right. Right, okay, good, thank you very much. Uh, can I, can I have a proposal, please? And a second, eh? Thank you. And a vote to accept the twenty-two twenty-three budget? Five.
I'm going to abstain again based on financial data.
Understood. Yep. So, approved. And twenty-one twenty-eight-eight, motion to receive recommendation from the HFC Finance Committee and agree to set the twenty-two twenty-three financial year preset. Anybody? Any comments to make? No? Thank you. Can I have a proposal, please?
I'll propose.
And a second. Thank you. And can I have a vote, please? Unanimous, thank you. Twenty-one twenty-eight-nine, to agree the purchase of several Android tablet devices for councillor use. These to remain property of HTC at all times and to be returned once any councillor has left office. Purpose of the devices is to reduce the amount of HTC and personal printing required as a member of the council in order to reduce the paper waste and cost. Uh, the purchase cost is there to a maximum of fifteen hundred pounds total cost for seven tablets. I've been made aware of a local business however, who may have, uh, seven tablets available. For nothing. So if, we will do a trial to see if they work. Just to explain to everybody, what, the reason we want these is because there are a number of different emails that people get, different email accounts. And it, it might not sound very difficult for a sixteen-year-old, but when you get this colour hair, it tends to get you baffled a little. And it's just to ensure that we've got a device which has one email account on it, which is the council one. And it may have Word and Excel in order that we can look at spreadsheets etcetera and documentation. Um, but it, it won't be having any games on it, that sort of thing. So that's the reason that we're looking at this, so that we can keep things separate from, on the parish council, from any other, uh, devices that we may have at home. Is that somewhere up recently? Yep, thank you.
May I make a comment, please?
Sure.
We're saying that we're doing this to reduce the amount of paper waste. But if you look at this room now, everybody has been furnished with paper here and there are a number of things, empty seats and I go around at the end of it picking it all up. And we do not have that many people who come to meetings. Would it be possible to reinstate the, I want to come to the meeting and you send people the agenda? Just a thought.
I love the idea. I love the idea. Do you think it's legal to do that?
Hmm, but what? I'm now confused, are we saying yes or no?
We're saying no, we're not allowed to do it.
Just cut down more trees then, eh?
No, I see your location providing paper copy of the agenda to all probably at the meeting.
So even though it's, even though it's online, if five people turned up here now, Ashley would have to produce five copies of documentation for them, should they request it? Yes, so, he's hand tied.
Can I just say that I prefer paper? I take it in better on paper. I don't like reading off screens and I do print everything. I also concur with councillor Julie Smith that I print everything off because to read it on the computer and especially on the size of the screen that you're gonna, uh, give to us, I think I'll be blind by next year.
Perhaps we can consider it a trial. And given that the local business, uh, has offered to try these out, we're doing it without any expenditure initially.
Just ask though, is, is there not a legal requirement to print documents off? Because every month, every, um, time we have a, a full council meeting at Cheshire East, it's always sent by post, regardless of it being online.
Um, that's a thing you can make.
No, there won't, it's...
We, we chose an email. Yes, but you want it all printed up? If it is up?
No! We do not want it printed up.
I do.
It's probably a matter of, it's probably something with, with only seven councillors, we probably, or with only seven councillors, we can probably manage, you know, if some people want paper copies, some people don't necessarily need it. I do want to ask a question about the tablets though, um, chairman, just, uh, if, if we're paying money for tablets, tablets, um, from my experience, are often a bit smaller than, than the screens we, some of us are using now. Um, so just wondering whether how, how useful that, well, whether that would be a problem, whether they'd be used?
If we were going to do nothing.
Okay, not. Oh, that, okay, so that's ahead of the fifteen hundred.
If you're more welcome to bring your own devices.
Yeah. Okay.
With all due respect, does the wifi allow for that amount?
Yeah, it does.
Second-hand laptops?
Yeah, um, so we're, we're not really proposing to go ahead with this purchase yet, are we? But perhaps if we can, uh, agree, if it, if it becomes necessary, we can agree the item now. If the trial doesn't work, that we have a, an opportunity with, uh, the motion. Yes? So can I have a proposal for this motion in the, uh, on the understanding that the trial wouldn't work?
Yeah, I'll propose.
And a second? Yes. Well, the proposal is that should the trial not work, then the council would purchase suitable machines.
So if the trial of the tablets doesn't work, we would then?
From the tablets.
Of the tablets, yes.
If the trial doesn't work, we surely would not going to buy the tablets?
No, the, the trial that we're doing is with tablets or devices that will cost us nothing. If they work, great, we use them. If they don't work, to do what we want to do, we have to then purchase some. Perhaps one initially, or a different tablet, or a trial. Yes?
I propose that we just defer this item and trial them and bring this back house and run.
Very well, yep. Proposal is to defer the item until, uh, we've looked into the trial. Can I have a proposal, please?
I'll propose. When is the trial going to start councillor Smith?
I don't have that information yet.
Okay. I'll propose.
And a second? Thank you. And can I have a vote, please? In favour? Yes. Thank you. Twenty-one twenty-eight-ten, to agree the HTC formal response to the Cheshire East Community Governance Review. Uh, I read the document and, uh, I think it's an excellent piece of work, as one that's been printed off. I read it online, yep. Um, I think it's excellent. It's got the four main points which have been, uh, produced and if you read this as a, a complete outsider, you're wondering why there's an issue. Um, but my view is that it's, uh, it's an excellent response. Does anyone have any other comments?
Councillor Smith, is this document on the website as well? But it will be tomorrow. Okay. I think it's an excellent document and I'd like to thank those people that, uh, put the effort in to respond to you. I think it's absolutely spot on. And, and like councillor Smith has said, anybody from the outside reading it realises just how passionate Handforth is about, um, not merging with Handforth, with Wormsley.
Can I have a proposal if no one's got any issues?
Just before, just before we do, can I just say that having spent Saturday, or a, a deal of Saturday, talking to people in the paddock, I was quite amazed at the number of people who came from Wormsley to shop in Handforth. So this thing about Handforth and Wormsley, um, being, uh, Handforth not having, um, the things that Wormsley has is just absolute rubbish. People were saying how lovely it is to come to Handforth, what a nice place it is and how easy it is to shop. I was really surprised, I just wanted to say that.
You know, one, one thing that may have influenced them is the free parking. Which you don't, free parking that you don't get in Wormsley. Okay. Okay, so does, does anybody have any comments on the actual document? Yeah, sorry. Um, yes, just need to mention that we have, uh, been issuing a survey, a document, uh, to all houses in Handforth. Some I believe may have been missed by the delivery people, but we're looking into that to make sure. And as councillor Moore said, we were at the paddock on Saturday, uh, talking to people, asking them for their views and, uh, I've got to say that I can't remember one person disagreeing with the premise that we want to stay independent. It was, there is, there is going to be a presence there this Saturday. And, uh, we even had the chair of Wormsley Town Council coming up to express his solidarity because he, as he does, and the chair of Chorley, they believe that we should all remain independent as well. Any, any more comments?
A big secret response in Chorley, been overwhelmed with the dangers as well.
Oh, that's good news.
Yep, okay.
Propose to accept.
Proposal, thank you.
I propose to accept the governance review.
The formal response?
Yes, the formal response.
Yeah, twenty-one twenty-eight-ten. A second, I've got a second? Yeah, thank you. All in favour? Thank you. It's a very large document. The response is that we want to retain our independence, that's the short version. Okay.
It will be on the website.
It will be tomorrow, it'll be on the website, yes. Thank you, uh, right. Can I suggest that we move on to twenty-one twenty-eight-twelve and just get those out of the way because I believe that the, for the, the most time is going to be taken up with people, um, possibly asking questions about the, the contract. So does any have a, anyone have a, an issue with that being moved? No, thank you. Next item, to agree some minor changes to the standing orders and financial regs appended to the Agenda Pack. Councillor Moore.
Um, you've all been given the changes that need to be made. Some of them are a given because there's just things that need removing. So is there anything that anybody objects to? There are a number of items that do need discussion, so, um, if you want to just bring anything up now before we start the discussion or just do it bit by bit? Okay, well, in the standing orders...
Can I just say councillor Moore, that I've looked at the amendments to the finance regulations and I agree with the changes. So isn't it better to ask any councillors if they have any issues with what the proposed amendments?
Um, I thought that was what I just did. No, the one, the thing that we need to do is actually agree the amounts, there's some amounts and there's quite a few, so I don't know how you want to handle that, because there's che, there's amounts in here that I want people to either agree or disagree with. If you're happy for, um, the clerk and I to get together and put a ceiling on those amounts, then if you can give us that mandate now?
I think they should have, they really want that order. I think you have one where, I think all the rest are down, they were really vague. I think they're, the gout, you're probably discussing them both. Head gas five hundred quid, do we want to take it?
No.
Um, there was one you said to put a thousand quid on.
Yes, there was, in that item seventeen or eighteen, I think, and we needed to know whether they wanted to reduce it from five or leave it as it was. If everybody's happy, then...
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to suggest that if the, if the chair of finance is happy about the financial regs, then I'm happy with them.
Then there's nothing more to discuss?
Thank you. Can I have a proposal? And yes, thanks to councillor Moore for, for doing that work on those. You're very good at it. Thank you. Um, can I have a proposal for, please, thank you, and a second? Thank you. All those in favour?
I'm going to abstain from this one, just because I think I feel like the discussion, majority of discussion on this was before I was having involved, so I'm not pretty aware.
Okay.
I'm sure, I'm sure if, if you need to, so you have to take him through it. Yes? Did we have a vote?
No.
Yes, some did.
Yeah, because some abstained.
Oh, yeah, of course you did.
Thank you.
A long, uh...
Uh, twenty-one twenty-eight-thirteen, to allow fifty-minute discussion forum for items not pertaining to the agenda. Uh, now I think that, uh, that should drop un- We wanted to get, ah, sorry, I was, I was thinking that there was another one on councillor Moore. Okay. Yep, okay, let's go back to twenty-one twenty-eight-eleven, if you'll just bear with me. As you know, at the last meeting, uh, I made a statement regarding some information that we had. We found, sorry, we found that, uh, quite a lot of people didn't hear very well on the recorded, uh, details that went on to YouTube. And what we wanted to do was make sure that everyone can hear on the recording that will be posted later this evening. Um, Ashley has checked and we hopefully have, just let me sort myself out, we hopefully have, um, a working system that the sound will be perfect so everyone can hear what's being said. Similarly, a number of residents were aware of what had happened in the past to cause the situation where we got to. I will try and get through this quickly, uh, so if you have any questions, please leave them till the end. This summary is not all encompassing, there is other stuff going on, but I'm just giving this alien facts. A councillor self-disqualified by not attending an HPC meeting for six months. Councillors Moore, Sampson suggested after four months to the chair, councillor Tolber, to contact this councillor due to the six-month rule, a danger of disqualification. His response was, it won't come to that. In June, the clerk advised that said councillor that they had self-disqualified. He'd already checked with TC Democratic Services, Cheshire Associated Local Councils, the National Association of Local Councils, his union, his association, and all stated that he had acted as the parish clerk should and it was not his job but the law. Councillors Tolber, Berkel and Bruerton ignored his, uh, her self-disqualification and refused to accept the situation. Due to the pressure that the three were putting him under to reverse the situation, even though he legally could not reverse that situation, the clerk was suffering stress and unfortunately reported sick. That's why they then began planning to sack the clerk, we have email evidence to that effect, for doing his job. Three councillors suspended the clerk and arranged to have him investigated by an investigative agency. In January, an investigation firm was appointed by the three councillors, as you were aware from that, uh, last meeting. A contract was signed to pay the company a large amount of money over a five-year period. This was done despite the protests and requests of councillors Moore, Sampson and myself to see details of the contract, we weren't allowed to. And the way that this was done bypassed all the council's legal procedures, such as requesting tenders and gaining approval from the full council. I've received a letter from a solicitor which I would say has no private confidential on it. And that is to me, so it's mine, I can do what I want with it. Dear councillor Jay Smith, and this is from Paul Danborough Solicitors. Our client, Mr Alad Bruerton. Private emails obtained and read out in council on fourteenth of September. I'm instructed by Mr Alad Bruerton, who is deeply concerned regarding the illegal interception, sharing and public disclosure of his personal email address. His personal email address has not been disclosed, not by anyone that I know of. This pertains to the public reading out from his personal email account concerning agenda item etcetera in an HPC council meeting that I understand you chaired. Now, there are some strange typos in this letter, which make me think that it might not have been written by a solicitor, but who knows? The details of his email were disclosed regarding a contract entered in twenty-twenty-one, question mark, brackets, or twenty-twenty, brackets. This is a matter that I understand is being formally investigated and subject to official scrutiny, brackets, by whom, close brackets. I know of no such investigation, which I think answers your question, no such investigation into the details of his email. My client has reviewed both the video and transcript at this part of the meeting and I'm instructed that it's claimed by you that the council received these emails from a journalist working for the Sunday newspapers in London, well, they only worked for one of them, who had acquired them via a Freedom of Information Act request. I don't remember saying that I'd received them from the journalist. I believe that what I said was, and you may remember, is that because of the request by the journalist, they, this information became public twenty one. So that was what I recollect. Next paragraph, given that our investigation, which is what, shows that these emails only subsisted on private email addresses and were not in the possession of a public authority. That's not true. These emails were not. They were on a public authority, they were on the HPC server. So anything that's on the HPC server belongs to HPC. Is that a reasonable way to say that? Thank you. And then he says, I'm concerned that the source described by you is highly improbable and not plausible. Apparently, they don't believe that I received them as as a result of a journalist requesting for them. Once he'd requested them, that information was public forum, it's available. So I got it from a very good source. My client has very real concerns which are as follows, how were these emails acquired while they were on the server? What is the identity of the source of these emails, HPC? When did these emails come into your possession? April. What checks, if any, did you carry out to ensure that they had been acquired properly? They're part of an FOI. Will you please send me all email correspondence that you hold, which involves Mr Bruerton, my client, and councillors Burkel and Tolba, as I understand they are also drawn into this disclosure? Well, if they want me to send all email correspondence for those three individuals for the last six, seven years, that's going to be a lot of emails. I shan't bother. For your information, Mr Bruerton has taken advice from the Information Commissioner's office and he is aware of the time constraints that exist for a response to be forthcoming from you. If it was an FOI, there would be time constraints. It's a letter. I can do with what I like. Mr Bruerton and councillors Tolba and Burkel have every right to suspect that their privacy is protected and GDPR rules complied with. This is my client's proper concern, which they have been. Please be advised that as these emails have been taken out of private email accounts, no, they haven't, not controlled by a public authority, yes, they are, HPC, and as such, no individual person has the right to share or publish them. We can because they're part of an FOI. I respectfully request that you cease and desist with immediate effect any further attempt to share, publish or disclose any private emails that you have in your possession, failing which, Mr Bruerton will seek redress against you. I will be obliged to receive your responses to my client's questions, pending which, Mr Bruerton can consider his position and the further protection of his rights. Yours sincerely. He's assuming that I have a requirement to answer his questions. I don't have a need to answer any of his questions. I'm satisfied and have received information from the Information Commissioner's Office, not from one of the people who just answered the phones, but someone at a higher level, that because these emails pertain to something that has been done on behalf of the council, that involves public funds and that they can be named. What I'll do now is just go through just a few of the emails, if you don't mind. This is about the fifth email in. Where, oh, it's worthwhile, one that I haven't highlighted, which was sent. Brian, I am both puzzled and concerned about your email. All I need is confirmation that your chair, the council's fee, will be paid. I'm concerned that you are servicing an HPC debt when you don't need to. I do suggest you stop paying it now before you make yourself liable for the whole thing. In terms of passing the minutes, I do not know how we can do this as I am no longer a member of HPC since last Sunday. Barry has stated he won't attend HPC meetings. In any event, the deal was passed three nil and that's the legal part. Passing the minutes only notes that which was agreed. Therefore, it's HPC's debt and not yours. Which is good of them. And working through this chronologically from councillor Tolba. I'm sorry if it's if it's going on this. We held a meeting in January which approved the contract at a hundred and twenty five pound per month plus VAT. You, Alad, were acting as clerk for the meeting but haven't yet written up the minutes. And this was in March. Therefore, we three are the only councillors that know of the existence of the contract or indeed any of the other resolutions made at that meeting. In front of all, I told them, I'm sure that because we did not have sure access to HPC's bank account, I would guarantee that payments would be made by myself until such time as we could get the chequebook. This was because of the urgency of getting things done and the fact that Ashley would not release the chequebook and other financial details and we needed things done quickly. Legally, Ashley was not permitted to release chequebook, PIN numbers or any of the council, the council equipment that he's responsible for. He would only have been able to do that on the day of his termination. And they considered that at that time, he had been reinstated from his suspension. After that, of course, was when the service we thought we were getting from Avenshaw turned out to be nothing like we all expected. So action wasn't taken against Ashley. This takes us to mid February. Since then, we have been able to enforce anything at HPC because neither you nor Barry have been able and willing to appear at HPC meetings. And you still haven't written up the minutes. We have therefore drifted into the situation where I am paying this bill every month. HPC as a body are unaware of the existence of the contract. And the longer it limps on like this, the more set in concrete it becomes. The last possible time we have to hold an HPC meeting where we can be guaranteed to pass it for approval is up until the by-election in May. There is a regular meeting planned for the twentieth of April. And it was that election in May due to councillor Julie Smith's standing for election on the West Ward. He knew that if she was elected, his casting vote would have gone. Therefore, he wouldn't have been able to force it through with his two cohorts. We therefore still have the opportunity to confirm the minutes of the meeting of January and get the contract started in a regular fashion on HPC's book. But it requires the minutes to be written up and presented to a meeting for confirmation and I cannot see that being agreed unless all three of us voted in. If you two guys won't do it, then we'll be stuck with this contract and I will be looking to you both to share the payments. Our chance to fix this by attending an HPC meeting in April will have disappeared. You may both find this option very distasteful, but the alternative is a bill that will not go away. Then from Mr Bruerton. To say that we are the only councillors who know of the existence of this contract is quite wrong. This contract was materially voted upon on Monday, the eighteenth of January. The vote went three nil in favour with those three refusing to vote. We refused to vote because we had no knowledge of the content of the contract and they wouldn't give it us. I chose not to write up the minutes after the conduct which we have been made subject to, which I presume is when it went viral. Secondly, John Smith will falsely include me, excuse me, of doctoring minutes again, which will lead to a critically serious situation, as I will not take that or any nonsense from that psychotic idiot. Because apparently I've been diagnosed professionally from the screen and it's clear that I'm a psychotic idiot. I believe he said his dad did it. He must know quite a lot about psychotic idiots. There is more. Alad, why don't you just write up the goddamn minutes? And you are still a councillor of HPC, if you want to resign, you have to write to me as Chair. Then there's a point from councillor Burkel. That would be the best way forward if Alad would write up briefly the minutes because Brian will have to produce the evidence for the clerk anyway. I will think about doing the minutes, but I still have greater reservations about doing so. Barry's way of presenting this is the best way as the mob will simply hold a meeting and rescind everything as they are juvenile and immature. I can, the, from Mr Tolba, I cannot see how HPC can place a contract on file in a way that will satisfy the auditors without an approved set of minutes that confirmed the contract was proposed, seconded and voted for. If we can't get this on HPC's books, then we're stuck with it. The sooner we get these minutes drafted and approved, the better. And then rather than refusing to do the minutes, I am reticent to do the minutes as I will be accused by John Smith of doctoring them. That will not stand and such an accusation could very well lead to a very serious situation. Does make a similar comment like that, so I'm just wondering if it's some sort of threat. One of the reasons why he finds me accusing him is because there was a meeting on the twenty fourth of August that was minuted, or so it was clerked by a proxy clerk because Ashley was suspended. He produced the minutes, four pages. When we got the minutes from councillor Tolba and councillor Bruerton, there was a page and a half, a four page and a half missing. All the comments that have been made by the three councillors here. Councillors Tom, uh, Sampson, Moore and myself. The clerk who did the minutes also mentioned that he'd been asked by the Chair to make some changes to those minutes, which to a clerk is tantamount to asking him to murder, isn't it? Then, Alad, can I make clear on the specific items and actions you are proposing we individually take to avoid this debt that we are currently each incurring? Fifty pound a month. We send the copy contract to Ashley and expect him to start up a direct debit mandate in favour of Avenshaw, but without any minutes. Brian, after much thought, I will do a set of draft minutes to show the legality of the decision regarding Avenshaw, but only if the following very fair conditions I met and agreed to. Number one, they're given to Ashley with a copy of the contract. Two, they do not go before council under any circumstances. Putting these minutes before council will be unacceptable and could lead to severe consequences. There's that implied threat again. From the Chair, I don't understand this, they have no value if they aren't placed before council. They couldn't be used to prove the contract was entered into legitimately. They couldn't be used to prove anything to the auditors. Doubly wrong there. They will be the proof of the decision and that's all you need and they will give you that. I know for fact that the auditors will accept this. Is my offer accepted? No. I'm stunned you've turned down my fair and sensible offer to get you away from a problem. I even spoke to Paul about this, that's his solicitor. It's your problem as well as mine, your proposed solution is ludicrous, it has no legal validity. Nearly there. Well, there's a simple solution, if you have such faith in the legal watertightness of your proposal, you provide Avenshaw with a guarantee. If you have complete confidence in this solution, no reason why you shouldn't back that up. Finally. Now, that is without a doubt the daftest solution I've ever heard or read. I am confident in my solution, having talked it over with a solicitor, which you haven't done. Again, all you need to do is provide evidence of the decision and nothing else. Even if a meeting could be held and it was voted through, what do you think the mob would do? They would call a meeting and have yet another gifted platform to ridicule us and rescind the acceptance of it. Has that not dawned on you? In terms of giving Avenshaw a personal guarantee, I'm not making that very same mistake. What possessed you to take the decision without consulting anyone? The problem of Avenshaw was caused by your mistake and no one else's. I undertook to take notes but not do the minutes. There is onus or responsibility on me to do those minutes. You also have yet again failed to recognise that my credibility will be attacked by John Smith, the man you continuously give a platform to or one of the other two. I also have to ask what team, there's no team as Barry won't attend meetings anymore. Secondly, a team works together and you didn't work with us, an example is the video published on Handforth People. That's where we're up to. One of the reasons that, another of the reasons why Mr Bruerton refers to me as a psychotic idiot and because I keep challenging him is because I examined a report that he put together with another ex-councillor for the Action for All Grant Application for Lifts at the Station for Government Money. And I found that when I used the what's it called, the software that, what's the word, when you copy? Plagiarise, yes, anti plagiarism software. When I ran that, it showed that again, there's about a page and a half at least that this legal expert had plagiarised from somebody's website. And councillor Tolba protected them from allowing, he wouldn't allow me to ever bring that up at a meeting. So I think that's one of the reasons as well that he considers me psychotic. We are still awaiting legal advice. This did happen separately, we got these emails, sorry, yeah, we got these emails apart of the FOI in Mar, in April, sorry. And we were then, as you know, last month, was it? Or not, we get a formal notice of default on our behalf because, from Avenshaw. And we will be we are awaiting legal advice from NALC, which is the National Association of Local Councils, who have a legal team and we're awaiting legal advice from some information that we've given them. Have you gone? I'd be surprised if it is. This is the way that it's been put to me. But that'd be for a solicitor to advise if it is or not. Alan? You, I'm I'm ahead of there, mate, yes, absolutely no response whatsoever. Yeah. Quite right, yes. Unfortunately, we have, they're going to take us to court and we can't allow the council to be subject to a CCJ. Well, that's we will be ready for them should they take us to court. We have lots of evidence, we even have a copy of the contract which is illegible. How they can enforce an illegible contract, I don't know. But despite repeated requests, still not given us a contract we can read, so. Well, Avenshaw are saying that they don't have a copy of the contract, that's the only one they've got. Oh, yes, yes. Yes, but we will be ready for, if we have to, we will have our day in court and we will produce all the evidence that we have and hope that whoever is presiding has an understanding of the real world rather than just contract or taught law. Oh, yes. Yes, and we would be ready with a cheque that if it went against us, we can dispatch our debt immediately. The debt, yes. Sorry, about to say something.
I just want to say that I think it's disgraceful and I don't think that our constituents should have to foot this bill. And we need to do everything in our power to make sure that we are not held responsible for this debt. I concur with councillor Smith.
It should be noted as well that once they'd agreed this contract, it didn't take very long for them to work out that it wasn't going to do what they wanted them to do in the first place. So how you would think that, well, it looks all right, we'll do that, shall we? And again, as I mentioned, the three of us were not able to have any details of that. In fact, it was the employment committee, if you will, who considered councillors Burkel, Bruerton and Tolba. And another member of that employment committee was councillor Sampson. She was not allowed sight of any documentation or accusations against Ashley unless she signed a non-disclosure agreement, which which legal eagle thought that one up, I wonder. Comment from Mrs Moore. Quite right, yeah.
So I don't really think that is going to have to be changed. Legally. No matter what we say or anyone else comments on, but I I just feel that because we don't have information as you have, it's not relevant to keep these now, these emails and stuff.
The reason that I've gone through this again is because at last month's meeting, the recording wasn't of very good quality. So we fixed that, so now we've just gone over the old ground again, and I don't have a problem in publicising it again in order that it may force others to reconsider their position, doubt it. But as for the emails etcetera, we wouldn't be distributing those anyway because that's what I've already been accused of doing by Mr. Bruerton. They are part of a Freedom of Information request, which makes it public. But I won't be passing them on. You can make an FY request yourself if you wish. No, it wasn't because I didn't have it then. It just arrived yesterday. It was new to me yesterday when it arrived. It will be on YouTube, yes. Yep, you can, that's why we wanted to make it a proper, hear, you know, hear everything perfectly so that everyone has the opportunity to do that.
We can't, I don't think, make all that documentation available to the public until after anything happens, if there is legal action.
Yeah, but we don't need to.
I think it's called, what's it called, prejudicial judgement or something. Can't remember.
Yes, we, yeah, if we're on the court steps and we've been given a verdict against us, we have to satisfy that debt. Yes. Correct, from any other individuals.
But we will be doing, in the meantime, every, everything we possibly can to avoid it.
Yes. Absolutely right. Yep, agreed, thank you. Any more comments? Okay, I'd like to have a proposal to the motion 212811, that should, if our council be found... Yeah, if it happens that a court judges against us, judges against us, that, just one second, that's, this motion will be on, right? The motion is that the clerk has the power to satisfy a debt should it be so ordered by the court. Yes? Just a second, let's just make sure that you're happy with that, Ashley.
Chair, can I make an amendment to that? That if we do have to service the debt, that we take action against those three persons, Burkill, Bruerton, and Tolva, to recover the money? Because it is Handforth Residence money. It's not ours to determine to satisfy a debt.
There are three names on it, one of which is a signature. So that would be for the legal bodies to toss out. Okay, did we have a vote on that? Yeah, that, the motion? Oh, well, we will, do we need them on the motion that we will be taking action to recover the debt? You got that as well? Okay. So, can I have a proposal? Sullivan, councillor Smith, all those in favour? Thank you. Straw poll of what the public think? Thank you, okay. And to receive notices and correspondence, 212814. Thank you. Next meeting, 9th of November. That's what we've done, that's what this is.
No, no, it isn't. We haven't done this one.
Which?
Fifteen minutes.
Oh, Remembrance Day, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Timings, yes.
Remembrance Day.
Yes.
The Christmas light switch on.
Remembrance Sunday is on Sunday, 14th of November. I've put this on the notice board about it, and I will put it on the, on Facebook. The pantomime this year is Dick Whittington again. And that will take place on the 26th of November. You show it on 4/1/7, that's on the notice board as well. I'm trying to remember, I'm not too sure. Five of the light switch on will take place on Saturday, 27th of November, starting at 2pm, but the light switch on takes place at 4pm.
Okay, would you like me to make sure that they, will they get on there from you saying that? Will it be on the recording? Yep, so the...
Can we also state that anybody that wants to book a stall at the Christmas market is to get in touch with Ashley, the clerk, on?
Yes. Yes. Okay, so Remembrance Sunday is the 14th of November. All the timings regarding that will be on notice boards and on our website and Facebook page, yes. The pantomime, Dick Whittington, 28th of November, sorry, beg your pardon, 26th of November. Two shows, one at four, one at seven, tickets from the parish clerk. And the Christmas light switch on, 27th of November. There will be stalls etcetera. Please get in touch with the clerk if you wish us to have a stall. And the event will run from 2pm, and the light switch on will be at 4pm. Any more comments?
Can I just make, oh, sorry. Go on.
I think we've had as much discussion as we're going to have today. Okay. Okay, let's have it. Yes.
No, for everybody.
Yeah, anybody.
That to bring up anything they want to talk about.
But just give us the subject.
But we won't necessarily be able to give you answers. It's just so that people can voice their opinions.
Did not have a specific space.
Doesn't really have anywhere very specific. But on the spatless thing, a lot of it's looked after by Onwood, and we don't want to step on their toes and vice versa. Some of it's looked after entirely by Cheshire East, some of it, Cheshire East, hard look after, half abandoned. So you'll look after that, and you'll do whatever you can to do it on the name for a better pathway.
Nearly half said that. Oh, that's what he said there, hang on. Nearly ten two.
That's Cheshire East, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you'll mow round the paddock beds and things like that.
Won't do it because of the infrastructure.
Yeah, that area will stay like that unfortunately because it can't be fixed because of the infrastructure and what's underneath. Yeah, but it... There's a path that doesn't allow you to walk straight across. Okay. Okay, thank you for that. No more items pertaining to the, not pertaining to the agenda, no? Certainly? Which report? Oh, the Standards Committee. We've been waiting for this since April. It just keeps on getting rolled over. 11th of November was when the, but... The latest version, 11th of November, yes. Once we, once we get it, it will hit the stands, the newsstands, very much so. But should, should that information come from Cheshire East with the results of the investigation, which is what we're waiting for? Once it lands in our inbox, it's going to fly, isn't it? There's lots of places that want a copy and lots of people who want a copy, and we'll be passing that on as soon as we can. Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you very much. Close of the meeting. Yeah, we said that, 9th of November, yep, thank you.